I know. I get six fifteen.
Okay.
That's the problem with the COVID virus, it's too cold.
Okay. All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's city commission meeting. Due to the current limitations on gatherings, unfortunately, our meeting tonight is not one that we can have open to the public. However, the public is invited to participate by viewing in any of the three ways that you can do that. The city's website, cityofclovis.org, our city's Facebook page, and on Suddenlink, Channel 10. The public is invited to give comments or ask questions. You would simply need to do that by calling those in tonight during the meeting. The phone number to do that is five seven five seven six three nine two zero zero. Please call your comments and questions in and they will be brought before the commission. We'll begin tonight's meeting with a prayer, followed by the pledge to the United States flag, as well as the salute to the New Mexico flag. If you would, pray with me. Our Father in heaven, we praise you today, God. Thank you for the many blessings that you give us each day. Lord, we pray for our city. God, please bless and protect our city and keep us safe and lead us to be prosperous. Lord, thank you for the privilege of doing the city's business here tonight. And I pray that you would guide our decision-making and guide our discussions. And Lord, we thank you for all that you're doing. And Lord, we pray that you would bring an end to the COVID-19 virus very, very soon. We pray these things, I pray these things, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of the perfect relationship among united cultures.
Our meeting has been called to order. Would the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Lovett?
Here.
Commissioner Madrid?
Here.
Commissioner Casaus?
Here.
Commissioner Elliott?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Here.
Commissioner Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Renda?
Here.
Commissioner Valley?
Here.
Mayor Morris?
Here. Thank you. First item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, you've each had a chance to look that over. Would you recommend any items be removed or rearranged?
I'm up for approval of the agendas presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. The motion carries. Our agenda has been approved. The next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes from the Thursday, May 7th, 2020 meeting.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, they're asking us who will second the motion for the agenda.
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner Garza and seconded by Commissioner Lovett. Thank you. We are looking at the approval of the minutes from the Thursday, May 7th, 2020 meeting. Those minutes are in your packet and you've had a chance to review those. Are there any changes or questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Casaus and a second made by Commissioner Madrid. Would the commissioners please vote? We're gonna do roll call? Okay. Will you please call rolls?
We can vote.
Get working.
We can vote.
You can vote.
Okay. Commissioners, please vote.
It's been so long, we still... I just need to get him back to the...
By a vote of eight to zero, the motion carries. The next item on tonight's agenda is recognition of visitors. Obviously, we are moving on past that one as we're not able to have the public attend tonight's meeting. So the next item then is proclamations, awards, and presentations. And we have one piece of business there tonight, and that is presentation of proclamation proclaiming May 17th through 23rd, 2020, as Emergency Medical Services Week. And I believe we have Captain Chenault to advise. Captain, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon and thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioners. I just want to, on behalf of the Fire Department and EMT in the Clovis Fire Department, I would like to thank each and every single one of you for your proclamation that you're gonna make this week for each next week. We especially appreciate the theme that you will introduce, the EMS Strong, Ready for Today, Preparing for Tomorrow. That theme really does and truly embody what we strive for within the Fire Department. That theme is especially appropriate, given the current unprecedented times that we are facing. CFD is truly ready for today. We have made several changes in our protocols in response to the pandemic to keep our EMTs safe, while providing the highest level of patient care possible. We have made numerous changes, especially within this past year, to meet the ever-changing needs of EMS within our community. Some of the changes that we have implemented include our new EMS division, which has allowed us to not only provide a more efficient EMS service, but has allowed us to expand our fire and rescue responses as well. We have also recently begun our new transfer service. This new service has allowed us to meet the necessary transfer needs, coming out of fear and see, while maintaining our 911 staffing levels here within the city and providing the high-quality emergency services that our community expects and that our community deserves. CFD is also looking to prepare for tomorrow. We are constantly evaluating the changing landscape of EMS. This includes new equipment, procedures, and medications, what have you. CFD is always striving to stay up to date and continue to be in the forefront of prehospital medicine. Everyone at CFD thanks you for your support, not only during EMS week, but each and every single day of the year. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Captain, and we appreciate you very much for attending the meeting tonight. And I will now read the proclamation. Whereas, emergency medical services are vital public service, particularly at this time. And whereas, members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate for those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services have grown to fill the gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, members of the medical services teams, which, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore I, Michael Morris, Mayor of the City of Clovis, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim, May 17th through 23rd, 2020, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme, EMS Strong, Ready Today, Preparing for Tomorrow, and encourage the community to join me in thanking our emergency medical responders for all they do to support the Clovis area community. And again, thank you to the Clovis Fire Department and EMS, and Captain Chenault for joining our meeting tonight to share with us. Next item on tonight's agenda is receipts of petitions and communications. And Commissioners, we have John Ryan on the phone, and he's going to give us an update, as well as speak to item number three under new business. But we're gonna let him address that now so that he can get going, because I believe today is a special day for him. I think it's his anniversary. So, under receipts of petitions and communications, we're gonna first hear from John Ryan. Mr. Ryan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. It is my anniversary and I talked to my wife about the presentation to the council, and she is happy to allow me to do this. But I do wanna get back to celebrating a little bit with her. Let me start first by welcoming you, Mayor, and a couple of the new Commissioners, Raleigh and Lovett, that I have not met. This time of year, we typically evaluate the city's priorities and plan a trip to Washington, DC to inform our congressional delegation of the important issues going on in Clovis. And we also, in that trip, often meet with agency personnel related to some of the different businesses that the City of Clovis deals with in Washington. Department of Transportation, Department of Interior, and other agencies that are funding and/or partnering with the City of Clovis on various programs. That being said, and with the unprecedented difficulties presented with meeting face-to-face with our delegation and/or their staff to update them on the priorities of Clovis, I worked with Justin and Claire and came up with the idea that let's let the delegation know how the City of Clovis is doing. Let's address a few issues that they may be considering during this time of them attempting to conduct their official business, but doing it in different ways. And so, we have a letter drafted that we came up with that basically thanks the delegation for their representation of Clovis and our New Mexico citizens and working to address the difficulties of COVID and how government and how businesses are handling the effect and the impacts of the COVID-19 disease pandemic. So, real quick, there's several bills that Congress and the administration have worked on to provide a little bit of relief. The four bills that have passed have all gone through in a bipartisan way and gone very quickly. There's a new legislation that's being considered that is a little more controversial. However, it has provisions in it that would fund and assist state and local government. And the letter that we have drafted to the delegation members, Senator Udall, Senator Heinrich, and Congressman Ben Ray Luhon, thanks them, appreciates their consideration for the needs of state and local governments, and closes with a few issues of appreciation for all the work that they do to assist the City of Clovis, Cannon Air Force Base, and eastern New Mexico. As many of the Commissioners know about these meetings in DC, several have participated in traveling to DC, presenting the issues with the delegation. And so, Mayor and Commissioners, this is a letter that we hope to submit to the staff. They're accepting emails, they're calling on the phone. They're trying to stay in touch and do their business, and they wanna hear from us. And so, that's what's before you in this letter, is the approval of the letter. And then, with your blessing, I would distribute it to the delegation on your behalf. I would be happy to answer any questions about the different bills, the schedules, what's happening in DC. And we could even discuss some of the government issues related to the state of New Mexico and the special session coming up, and their interest in balancing their budget on June 18th, the special session coming up. So I'll stop there. Mayor, Pro Tem, Commissioners, see if there's any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. I appreciate the update and the information about the letter. Commissioners, we will deal with that business item when we reach it in the agenda. So we're not taking action on that at this moment. But do you have questions for Mr. Ryan?
I just have a comment. Mr. Ryan, congratulations again on your wedding anniversary. And I hope you are prepared for that, with flowers, dinner, and all that. And I hope we can see you soon.
Something like that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I look forward to seeing you as well.
Commissioner Madrid, did you have something to ask?
Hey, John, congratulations on your anniversary.
Well, thank you. Twenty-six years.
How many years?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
He had to think about that one. Doesn't look good, John.
You're catching up to me. I got forty-nine.
Well, if we don't have other questions or comments for Mr. Ryan, we'll let him get back to...
Mayor?
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, Commissioner Renda.
Thank you, sir. John, it's Rue Renda. There is some verbiage. One, the term "nonessential business" always sets my teeth on edge. I would suggest that any businessperson in Clovis, New Mexico, believes that their business is something other than nonessential. And I believe they think their business puts food on the table for their families. So, that is one issue that I have with it. Another issue is, realistically, is this letter redundant? That was a question.
Thank you, Commissioner Renda. The nonessential business, you know, there's clearly other terminology that you could use to describe what we wanna describe there. With regard to the redundant nature of the letter, it does reflect a little bit of what Congress and Washington has done to date. But really, there's an issue of making the states and local governments whole with regard to some of the budget impacts that they're gonna be facing. And the most recent effort is a House-passed bill. It's another $3 trillion bill that's dead on arrival in the Senate. But, you know, the Senate and the administration have other priorities that they wanna get accomplished. But, you know, the White House has advocated for some different issues here recently with regard to corporate tax cuts for bringing back overseas jobs and payroll tax cuts and that sort of stuff. So, there's still an effort, I believe, to have another bipartisan bill, probably not near as large and as expensive as the bill that was just passed by the House, the $3 trillion bill. But, you know, there's likely to be some effort to increase the opening of our economy and provide additional relief going forward. We just, it just hasn't materialized past a first salvo that came from the House. And that bill is gonna probably be, you know... probably be, you know, the starting point for a new negotiation. And who knows? Politics may overtake this effort, and we don't do any more bills before the election in November. But I think there's going to be some earnest attempts to come back with another bill. And in that bill, we're asking for consideration of relief to state and local governments.
Thank you, John, and I apologize for holding you up on your anniversary, and I don't mean to harangue you. I mean, I will mention that the $3 trillion ain't much if you say it fast. Thank you.
Do we have other questions for Mr. Ryan? I believe we will let you get back to your anniversary, Mr. Ryan. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
I haven't received notice. Do we have anyone else on the phone with Communications or petitions?
Mayor?
Yes.
This is David Lansford, 128, Colonial Estates, Mayor and Commissioners. You've got about three minutes. I'd like to share a thought with you.
Well, hello, Mr. Lansford. Thank you for joining us. You have the floor.
Hey, by the way, this weekend, this Monday, is Memorial Day, and I can remember back years ago when Robert Moreno was the Mayor-Pro-Tim, and we always had Buddy Poppy Day. And that was always a nice thing to do, to remember veterans of foreign wars. My dad is a ninety-seven-year-old veteran of World War II, and I haven't been able to see him in a couple of months. And, you know, it's tough on me, but I think it's possibly tougher on him. But at any rate, I want to congratulate you, Mayor, and the Commissioners, Mayor-Pro-Tim Bryant, for your leadership thus far with this situation that we're all struggling with. But I want to tell you that mandatory mask-wearing is the line in the sand. You know, the mandatory mask-wearing is a, quite frankly, it's a gateway to more erosion of our rights. I took a look just recently at the City of Clovis's animal ordinance. You might note that it's 6.04 to 6.14, and it covers all of the things that are required for residents who own dogs to keep them responsibly. And imagine for yourselves, you know, that that is the direction, basically, that we're heading in, where, you know, we're getting an ordinance to control human beings. And I believe with all my heart that the mask being mandatorily required is not only an act of voluntary servitude, it's slave training. And this city, this commission, this state needs to stand up and say, "That is the line in the sand." We're not going to put up with it. And not only that, in my opinion, as a pharmacist, and I'm speaking as a pharmacist here, it's detrimental to wear a mask when you're healthy. It's the same principle if you put a sock in an exhaust system of an automobile, the waste product that you're trying to eliminate from your lungs, which is carbon dioxide, every cell in your body needs oxygen, and every cell in your body excretes carbon dioxide, and it has to be eliminated from your body. And when you're not eliminating carbon dioxide appropriately, it causes the fight-or-flight mechanism to kick in with the sympathetic nervous system. And a consequence of that is the secretion of cortisol and adrenaline. So, you might imagine that if you had a constant, ongoing level of adrenaline, your blood pressure would go up, your heart rate would go up, it would adversely affect your organs. The other chemical that's secreted under the fight-or-flight mechanism is cortisol. And cortisol is an anti-inflammatory substance secreted by your own body that delays the immune response. And so, taking and wearing a mask and going into the fight-or-flight mechanism, and your body constantly secreting cortisol under stress makes you more vulnerable to infection and disease than not wearing a mask. So, in government, we always look at the cost-benefit, and if there is a cost-benefit, you might do it. Well, there is no benefit to wearing a mask if you're healthy. And this city, and including me, needs to say no. And I, for one, am not going to wear a mask. I'm not going to go to a store and wear a mask. It makes me more likely to get sick. And it needs to be stopped. This is the line in the sand. And I'm going to stop there, but I have a lot more to say if anybody's interested. But again, I think to this point, you guys have done a fabulous job of being, you know, the nature of Clovis, you know, always wanting to get along and be peaceful and harmonious and polite and respectful like we've always been. But this is the line in the sand, and it needs to be stopped. The only hope I have left with regard to this ridiculous authoritarian rule that's been placed on this state is the fact that I hope our president understands what's really happening and that he's allowing these governors to expose their authoritarian nature. And so, I'll end with that. And I don't need any questions. I'm not asking for any questions. I just wanted to make a public comment. Again, thank you, guys, and staff, for what you do.
Thank you. Do we have other callers on the line with Communications? I'm getting a... Okay. Do we have any way of... I understand that we do have other callers on the line. IT is telling me so. If you're waiting on the line, please press star six and join the meeting and identify yourself.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. It's David. I have one last statement to make. The thing that we need to remember is the governor said that she was asking for extreme peer pressure for people to wear masks. That's nothing other than a provocation for us to get mad at one another. It's sinister, and it's wrong, and it needs to be called out, and it needs to be refuted, and it needs to be resisted. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Lansford. All right, one more time. Do we have anyone out there who has called in and wishes to provide communication or comments? Okay. Hearing none at this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This item is placed on the agenda so that the commission, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any proposal does not meet with the approval of all commission members or if a citizen so requests, that item will be heard when it's reached under the regular agenda. I will now read the items, beginning with number two. Approval of Resolution 3018-2020 of Newman Lake Subdivision, Unit Number Two, replat of a portion of Block Four of the Hillcrest Edition, Unit Number Two. Number three, request for approval of adoption of Resolution Number 3019-2020 of the replat of Tract Twelve of the Malden Edition. Number four, request for approval of lodgers' tax disbursements for May 2020. Number five, request for approval to award RFP 20-0401-04, Region Five Drug Task Force Coordinator, to Roger Grau. Number six, request for approval to award, excuse me, request for approval of award of ITB 20-0409-04 Bulk Diesel Fuel to Farwell Fuels. Number seven, request for approval of Community Development Block Grant Letter of Support for Curry County. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments about the items proposed for the consent agenda?
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Casals.
I only have a comment regarding the lodger's tax, number four. You know, in this day and age, since we're trying to be frugal with our money, I don't understand how we give more than what was requested. And that's my only comment.
Okay.
Ms. Burrows, do you want to address that?
Ms. Burrows or Mr. Hawalt, can you speak to that?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor-Pro-Tim, and Commissioners. The Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, we started off the year with a healthy bank account, and some of these events don't aren't until next fiscal year. And so, the Advisory Board felt at this time that in order to try and get our economy back, it'd be a good idea to try and increase the attendance at our events. And so, the requester of this particular event asked for $4,500, but her total advertising budget was $6,900. And so, she felt, or they felt, that it would be prudent to award the full amount of advertising versus just the requested amount in this particular instance.
Thank you for that. Does that help?
Well, I just feel like it needs to be taken into consideration. I mean, we're trying to save money, and I just, I just don't think we should give more than what is requested. And that's my opinion.
Absolutely. And the lodger's tax promotional items are actually, have to be used for that specific purpose. So, even if the City of Clovis was trying to save money from that particular fund, it would have to be used for those particular items. And so, we're not able to move those around within the budget itself if we needed to help various other funds because of that specific dedication for them.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a comment on that. Their marketing budget was for $6,965. The board found that it was appropriate for them to get the full amount, although it was not requested, but it was appropriate at that time. Not just because we want to be free with the money, it's because it was appropriate, and we've done it before. So, it's not the first time.
Thank you for that additional explanation, Commissioner.
Mayor, I do have a question on that one as well.
Yes.
When is that particular event scheduled?
September, I believe.
Yes.
September.
So, right after the fair?
That is correct. It is after the fair. And once again, these are all contingent upon the reopening of the economy.
Right, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Assuming the, for some reason, the event didn't take place, we would never actually disburse the funds.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Any other questions about the items to be placed on consent?
I'll make a motion to place indicated items on the consent agenda by unanimous vote.
Second?
We have the motion from Mayor-Pro-Tim Bryant, and I heard a second from Commissioner Elliott to place the indicated items on consent by unanimous vote. Will the Commissioners please vote? By a vote of eight to zero, the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve or acknowledge all items on the consent agenda?
I saw more.
I, that was very fast. We got, we got the motion from Commissioner Madrid, and the second came from Commissioner Casals. Would the Commissioners please vote? And by a vote of eight to zero, the motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have introduction and adoption of resolutions and ordinances, and we have three pieces of business there. The first one is request for approval of introduction of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement and intercept agreement by and between the City of Clovis, New Mexico, the governmental unit, and the New Mexico Finance Authority, or the Finance Authority, evidencing a special limited obligation of the governmental unit to pay a principal amount of up to $9 million, together with interest thereon, for the purpose of financing, one, the cost of refunding, paying, and discharging of the governmental unit's outstanding, A, gross receipts tax refunding and improvement revenue bonds, Series 2011A, B, gross receipts tax improvement revenue bonds, Series 2011B, and C, gross receipts tax revenue bonds, Series 2010. Two, funding a loan agreement, reserve account, and three, paying a loan processing fee, providing for the payment of the principal and interest due under the loan agreement solely from the distributions of the revenues received by the governmental unit pursuant to Section 7-1-6.4 in MSA 1978, the state shared gross receipts tax, providing for the distribution of the revenues of the state shared gross receipts tax from the State Taxation and Revenue Department as, excuse me, to be redirected to the Finance Authority or its assigns pursuant to the intercept agreement for the payment of principal and interest due on the loan agreement, delegating authority to make certain determinations concerning the term of the loan agreement and intercept agreement, ratifying actions heretofore taken, repealing all action inconsistent with this ordinance, and authorizing the taking of other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the loan agreement and the intercept agreement. And I believe we have our city attorney, Mr. Jared Morris, to advise. Mr. Morris, you have the floor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll advise.
Thanks, Mr. Hawalt. Appreciate that.
And first off, it's a very long title, and it's not something that we just put on there to see how good you're reading titles. It's just the way that we have to go about that.
I thought it might have been a test.
Obviously, with the, with the good interest rates that are available to us underneath this current situation, we felt it would be the responsible thing to do to look at the existing debt and loans that the City of Clovis has in place and has put into place throughout the years. And so, in order to do that, we reached out to Eric Harrigan with RBC Capital Markets, who is our financial advisor, to evaluate the various loans that we do have in place. He identified the three loans that were mentioned in the title and determined that those loans would be best suited for the City of Clovis to either refund and refinance or to restructure that debt service on those loans. Mr. Harrigan is, Mr. Harrigan is on the phone, and so, he has a PowerPoint presentation that he's going to go through with each of you, and then will make himself available for questions. I also believe that we have Daniel Alsop, who is our bond counsel, on the phone as well, in case you had any questions regarding that. So, with that, Mr. Harrigan?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Hopefully, everybody can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Well, I will, I will go through the presentation at a fairly high level. As Mr. Hawalt already indicated, that the ordinance relates to the refunding of three outstanding bonds, the Series 2010 state shared gross receipts tax, and two 2011 loans through the New Mexico Finance Authority that are also secured by a state shared gross receipts tax. We have a couple of options that the city could consider in regard to refunding those bonds, but specifically, just looking at the refunding of loans, the Series 2010 bonds, the city could refund those under current market conditions and generate approximately $320,000 in present value savings, or about 7%. The two 2011 loans could be refunded... The two two thousand and eleven loans could be refunded and generate approximately two hundred and twenty thousand dollars present value savings or about five point nine five percent. In both instances, the city would be replacing higher interest rate debt with with lower interest rate debt. On page two of the presentation, we talked a little bit about the market. I will just say that due to the impact of the pandemic, we had seen interest rates decline fairly significantly. Interest rates hit an all time low in late February as the pandemic hit the United States and started to impact local governments. You did see a lot of volatility in the markets. However, because of the stimulus programs and the Federal Reserve quantitative easing, markets have stabilized, rates have come back down, and we're now getting close back to those low rates, those low historical rates that we saw back in February. Specifically to the refundings on page three to the two thousand and ten bond, two thousand and ten bonds were issued to fund a solid waste project. The refunding would generate about thirty-six thousand dollars in annual savings to the city if it looked at just refunding those bonds and maintaining the same final maturity and same structure as the original two thousand and ten bonds. Because the city has the ability to refund those bonds for savings and can generate annual debt service savings, on page four of the presentation, we've also provided an option which would allow the city to refund and restructure the bonds to provide some debt service relief in the two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two fiscal years. And this is accomplished by extending the debt by one year, allowing for level debt service and no principal payment in two thousand and twenty-one, allows the city to free up about three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in debt service savings in year twenty-one and about a hundred and twenty-two thousand in twenty-two with similar debt service payments that the city is currently making beginning in two thousand and twenty-three. This still allows the city to generate approximately a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in present value savings over the life of the bonds. For the two thousand and eleven, New Mexico Finance Authority loans, there were two loans, the A and B loans, and they funded the acquisition of the golf course and then also various park improvements for the city. Refunding those bonds, as mentioned earlier, generates about two hundred and twenty thousand in present value savings or about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars in annual debt service savings to the city. The city would also have the option to, as mentioned on the two thousand and ten bonds, to restructure, refund and restructure these bonds, and that would allow for generating about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of debt service savings in year, in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. And again, this is accomplished by extending the debt by only one year, still generates positive present value savings to the city. After fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, it would generate about twenty-three thousand dollars in in debt service savings and on a present value basis, about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. We have a little bit of of information on the market, but before I go into that, I will maybe pause and see if any of the Commissioners or Mayor have questions regarding the refunding that is presented.
I'm tracking and and like what I'm hearing, Mr. Harrigan. Do we have questions from the Commissioners? Okay, please, please continue on.
Going on to the market update, I'll try to be fairly brief, but as I mentioned earlier, we have seen significant support from both Congress and the Federal Reserve to to try to inject and stabilize the economy because of the pandemic. As far as the stimulus and the Federal Reserve actions, they have brought stability back into the municipal market, and rates continue to maintain to be very low. As we all know, the pandemic has affected just about every single asset class that we have seen with our economists projecting a fairly significant decline in GDP growth for the United States in the second quarter of this year, but a rebound in both the third and fourth quarter, and due in part largely to the stimulus that's been approved by Congress and the Federal Reserve actions. You know, on page ten of the presentation, gives you this historical look back at the past ten years of where interest rates have been. And even with the impact that the COVID had on rates in the March timeframe, rates have come back down. And you'll see that over the last ten years, rates still are very low compared to where they have been the last ten years, even where they have been historically over the last forty to fifty years. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any additional questions and or happy to turn it over to Daniel Alsop with the module offer.
Thank you, Mr. Harrigan. Do we have questions at this point? Hearing no questions, or, excuse me, Mr. Hawalt?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Pro-Tend and Commissioners. And Eric, I know that there was two proposals presented, and that was to either restructure or just simply refund and refinance the the bonds. Is there a decision that needs to be made this evening regarding whether to refund and restructure or just to simply refund?
At at this point in time, I mean, if there is, if there's a direction from the Commissioner Mayor that they would like for us to pursue, that is, that would be fine. However, at this point in time, we don't need specific direction. We'll be coming back to the Commission at the June meeting where we would need more specific direction from the city on on which structure, refunding structure it would like to pursue.
I like that.
Okay, great. We like the extra time to think about that. That that sounds good. Any other comments before we hear from Mr. Alsop? Do we need to hear from Mr. Alsop?
I don't think so.
No, we like it? Would anyone like me to read the title again? Okay. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Garza.
I'll second motion.
And a second from Commissioner Madrid. You won again. Will the Commissioners please vote? By a vote of eight to zero, the motion carries. Next item under this section is request for approval of adoption of resolution number three zero two zero dash twenty twenty, ratifying and approving submission of an application required by the Finance Authority. And we'll ask Mr. Hawalt to give us direction on this.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Pro-Tend and Commissioners. And it's just like it was titled, so obviously, the city of Clovis would like to move forward with an application to the New Mexico Finance Authority for refunding the bonds. And so the Finance Authority requires this resolution in order for us to submit that application, and so this meets that requirement. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, as well as Mr. Harrigan would obviously still be available as well.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Casals.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Lovett. Will the Commissioners please vote? By a vote of eight to zero, the motion carries. Next is item number three under this section, and it is request for approval of adoption of resolution number three zero two one dash twenty twenty, assisting hoteliers impacted by the New Mexico Public Health COVID nineteen executive orders, adjusting sewer bill of the city of Clovis in relation to the hotel occupancy and in accordance with the reduction in hotel occupancy percentages established by the orders of the state of New Mexico. Mr. Hawalt?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Pro-Tend and Commissioners. If you recall, at the last city commission meeting, you were approached by a citizen and the owner of a hotel locally that was pleading for assistance in how we may be able to help that industry that's been impacted so greatly by the the regulations that have been put in place. It got us to to brainstorming on what we would be potentially allowable to do underneath the ordinance and state statutes. And this is something that we we came up with as far as being able to potentially help them out with the charges on their sewer bills. We have previously done similar type operations with vacant houses, with multifamily apartment complexes or even RV parks, in which the owners of those properties track which, how many vacancies they have or how long that property has has been vacant, and then come in and ask for adjustments to their sewer bills. We typically do not do this with hotels simply because the rooms are rented every night or potentially, and so it's from an accounting standpoint to keep track of how many actual rooms are vacant and be able to make adjustments to to those bills would just be simply, it'd be a logistical nightmare. However, underneath this particular order by the governor and the reduction of their their occupancy loads by fifty percent and twenty-five percent respectively, we could ultimately adjust their bills by that same percentage. Obviously, if the the rooms are not being rented, there is no water waste going down these sewer lines, and so therefore, those rooms are are not generating any any waste. Looking at it and analyzing the seventeen hotels that we have locally and the average number of rooms of around a hundred and eighty-five, this would cost us approximately forty-five hundred dollars a month in revenue and lost revenue because of reducing those those bills. But once again, we felt like the closure of those hotels obviously are not something that they've chosen to do. It's been forced upon them, and so just wanted to bring this to you for consideration in a way that we would be able to potentially help this industry out. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate that, Mr. Hawalt. I think it's, I think it's an excellent idea. I appreciate you finding it as a as a way to provide some relief to to that particular industry and to those affected by it here. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I do have a question for Mr. Hawalt. The fifth, excuse me, the fiscal impact is forty-five hundred per month, correct?
Yes.
Is this going to be for the quarter?
No, it's forty-five hundred dollars a month. And so what we would do is we'd go back and adjust, they're going to be billed their full amount, and then we'd have to go back and adjust them at the end, and so they would end up with credits on there. Our charges are based on a monthly assessment. However, we bill them quarterly. So the rates that are set up are are based off of a monthly standpoint, but we don't bill them until for the quarter.
Okay, so it would just be that, that that one month?
No, what we're doing is leaving this in place until they come back to one hundred percent occupancy loads. So as the restrictions start to lift, it obviously started with a fifty percent reduction, and then they got down to a seventy-five percent reduction. And so if they come back up in a staged event, then we'll we'll continue this resolution in place until they're back at one full one hundred percent occupancy allowance.
So we would go back to when they were first restricted and and continue this until the point in time when they're back to one hundred percent occupancy or have the ability to.
Correct.
When the orders are lifted.
When the orders are lifted.
Yeah. When the orders are lifted, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody understood that correctly.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
I think that's a great idea, and I move for approval.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Casals, and the second came from from Commissioner Garza. Thank you. Will the Commissioners please vote? By a vote of eight to zero, the motion has carried. Okay. So the motion has carried, but we also may have someone on the line about this. Mr. Jerewala, this is Mayor Morris. Are you on the line?
Um, yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city commission. Thank you. Thank you so very much for having me and giving me this opportunity to to attend this meeting. And I was contacted by Claire, Ms. Burrows, to let me, inform me when I, I also got the information from the newspaper that this was being discussed. And and I would like to thank the city for at least beginning somewhere, you know? That at least this is where a saving is a saving for us, and I really appreciate you guys putting two plus two into it, thinking and and what's right to do and what's like, you know, is appropriate. I just had a, I mean, this is just the statistics data. Again, I don't know, and the the reason I was waiting was also to hear the the whole meeting and also try to speak at the end about it. What, I had, I, we have a revenue management meeting every week with my best Western revenue managers, and she gave me some statistics yesterday. She said, we have a agency which is called STAR, S T R, which does the the reports on occupancy, ADR, RevPAR, and and all that information for the whole, it's a standard, it's a standard agency that does the reporting and gives us the forecast and what to expect. She shared with me that same STAR agency put out the numbers for two thousand and nineteen for the hotels all around U.S. That is, any hotel that reports to STAR with if with me as a franchise, we are required to report, you know, it's automatic. She said that the numbers that were put out for two thousand and nineteen, that all across, all across the United States last year, considering the 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 economy brand to the luxury brand. And they said that average occupancy in the United States was sixty-five percent occupancy with a hundred and thirty-one dollars ADR. Now, again, please, it's from the bottom, which there might be hotels that might be renting for forty dollars a night to six hundred dollars a night, you know? But this is I'm talking about in general. She said that the same agency has put out a forecast for two thousand and twenty. They said that we will have thirty-five percent occupancy for the whole year. That is, anybody, like, you know, the same range. And the ADR would be hundred and two dollars. Next year, in two thousand and twenty-one, it is going to go up to fifty percent. She didn't share the ADR with me, but but that's just the occupancy that she shared with me, you know? I mean, this is her job, this is her expertise, and she shared that with me. I thought that that would be something you guys might look into it, you know? Just before the meeting started, I received again an email from AHLA, American Hotel Lodging Association, which I forwarded to Mayor Morris and several other Commissioners, who I had them handy, like, their email in my in my inbox. You should read that. They say that the hotels are not going to be expected to do as normal until late two thousand and twenty-two. But again, like I said, is, these are the baby steps that we have to take. I did understand, I, I, again, like I said, is, I really appreciate some, like, you know, at least well begun is half done, you know? So, I mean, this, we really appreciate the city manager and the commission to vote on our sewage bill, you know? Again, I want to emphasize something on 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 which Commissioner Casals brought it up for lodger stacks, that that we are appropriating funds. And and again, I have served, appropriating doesn't mean that it's already spent. I mean, I absolutely understand that, you know? But if 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 these numbers, the way the numbers are, you try, and and again, this was just something, and I'm telling you guys that you guys can brainstorm into it, we have a fund. Let's see if we Let's see if we can do a little more brainstorm, like City Manager Mr. Howard did, you know, as far as this goes. If those funds could be used somehow or the other, you know, to assist the industry that collects and brings it, you know? In the times that we are trying to control expenses, you know, as far as I go, I mean, I would not mind, like, city, the city could probably compensate for their sewage bill out of that fund. Please, we don't want the city to lose, you know? At the end of the day, because there are a lot more jobs dependent on that, too. So I mean, again, I can, I don't know, I'm not in this business, so I might not know, but that's why we have a city attorney. I think so we should make use of his position and his expertise, of having him brainstorm that during this time, how can we stretch our dollar to the maximum? You know, I mean, this is just a suggestion, like I said. Instead of just appropriating, appropriating funds, I mean, you could, you could, we could probably try to stretch our fund, like, you know, our funds, and I'm not, again, I'm not speaking on behalf of just the hotels, I'm talking about all the businesses, you know? All the small businesses in Clovis. If there are funds in certain, certain area that are appropriated for us to use just because we need to award them or appropriate them, that doesn't make, and that doesn't make sense or give any reason for them to just appropriate. No, the, you know, we live in Clovis, you know? And it's very hard, and it's going to be like five times or 10 times more harder, you know, than, than any metropolitan city to bring, like, you know, tourists and like, you know, or, 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 or any other, or any other, for any other events, people to come visit, you know? And this is just a personal thought again, you know? And meanwhile, if this is the year we go a little dormant and try to see if, where we can stretch and spend that money with passing some ordinances or anything like that, we should, we should look into it. Just to give you one example, our neighboring state, Texas, has lifted, I just wanted to give you some insight, you know? There was a day that when I had 11 rooms out of my 11 rooms, seven rooms were from Texas. This is just to let you know. I mean, I absolutely understand, they have their reasons. Our governor has her reasons to do what, what she's, Madam Governor is taking her decision. But we really, we really can't, we really can't sit around and expect. So hopefully, hopefully, you know, we get, we get our businesses open. And, 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 and being at the border of the state of, like, you know, state of Texas, we've already started seeing, since the restrictions have been lifted, that people have started to travel a little bit. And we are seeing that business, you know? Again, it's not great, nothing great. As long as we are beginning, that's good. I don't know if there is any body in state, like, you know, as in, like, a government body who could stand up to our governor and say something to her, or, 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 again, like, you know, I think so, like, Mayor answered that question, being elected on the Mayor's Council, the very first address that I heard since you were, since you were invited to that meeting, it was just deaf ears, you know? You gave your suggestions, but it just, so it seems like a person is with a, with a mission that, that would not like to take, would like to take any input on anything. But they would still have the Council to just create a show, you know?
Mr. Jerewala, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, would it be fair to say that I'd like to follow up with you and visit with you more? And, and we would continue to look for ideas to help businesses in Clovis. And certainly, we continue to look for ideas and ways to get our community opened up again. And I was excited to know that you were actually listening in tonight as we pass this resolution, which I know does not solve all of your problems, but, but is helpful. And I'm very proud that we were able to do that. And I'm so glad that you were here to hear it. And we love hearing input from you. Would it be all right if we have a look at the email that you mentioned that you sent us? And then also follow up with you in order to continue hearing your concerns and having conversation? Would that be okay?
Yeah, that would be absolutely fine, that would.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for being with us, Mr. Jerewala. We appreciate you and your willingness to share. And again, we're glad that we were able to pass this resolution. As we know, it will be at least a little bit of help to you. Again, thank you for being here this evening.
Can I share one last thing before I, before I step down? Just one last thing.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I did not know if the City Manager, Mr. Howard, had mentioned, because I did contact Mr. Howard about seeing, because now that, at least my business, that who have received funding from the federal assistance funding, we requested for the penalties and the interest to be waived, and we would probably make the payment in full, if, at least, if that was an option. I don't know if it was ever ran to you, or, because they were supposed to get back to me, but I did not hear anything about it. Maybe you guys are still mulling your options or, like, you know, trying to figure out what was going on. But I just wanted to let you know that since I'm on the stage, I might as well bring it to you, to your guys' attention as well.
I'm glad you brought that up. That has not been forgotten, and, and, and that's part of what, what we can visit about when I follow up with you, if that's all right.
Okay, no worries, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jerewala, have a good evening.
Okay, bye.
Commissioners, our next agenda item is unfinished business, and we have no unfinished business to look at there. So we'll move on to new business. And we have three items there. The first is request for approval for variance.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Did we finish that item?
Yes.
We did, the, the motion carried.
Okay, all right. I don't remember pushing the button here, that's why I'm asking.
Thank you.
I was not the mover, so that's why I'm asking.
I'm glad you asked, just, just for review, that, the motion did carry.
Okay.
Okay, all right, very good. Back to new business, item number one, request for approval for variance for sale of alcohol in Hillcrest Park during 575 Food Fest and Over Under Festival from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM Saturday, October 17th, 2020. And to share more about this with us, I believe we have Ms. Ginny Hansen on the phone. Ms. Hansen, if you're on the line, please press star six, and you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work and countless hours you guys have been putting in to help the economy, our city, small businesses during this global pandemic. We really do appreciate everything you guys have been doing.
Thank you for that.
You're very welcome. So of course, this is, 575 Foodie Fest is all going to be dependent on the guidelines, if we can have it happen in October. And we'll go according to what the CDC recommends for us to have public events during that time. I'm just asking that I can have permission to have a beer garden again, like I did in the previous Foodie Fest last year.
Okay, thank you for that, and please don't go anywhere in case we have questions for you. Commissioners, what, what questions or comments do you have? Commissioner Elliott?
Yes, Ms. Hansen, I was just looking at your request here. And here where it says, we will, will this event require a picnic license for alcohol, and you said yes. And then it says, if yes, please attach a proposed map of area where alcohol will be served together with a letter stating how you intend to secure the area and copy of the completed picnic license. Of course, we know this is not going to be close to a church, so that's not an item we need to be concerned with. But I was just, didn't see this map or the area of where the alcohol was going to be served.
Oh, I apologize if I didn't get to you. I sent it a couple months back. It's going to be at the exact same location as it was last year at Hillcrest Park. So you know where the corner with the back wall is? And then it kind of, it's in a corner away from the trees. It's, I don't know how else to explain where that is exactly without the picture in front of you. So I do apologize, I couldn't get that to you. But it will be in the exact same location it was last time. So it's kind of in the back corner up against the wall at the Hillcrest Park by the zoo.
Okay, and another question, now, the food, this is food trucks? Is that what this is going to be?
So, yeah, so this year, we kind of expanded, and we paired up with the Under Over Festival that happened last year. And we thought it would be a great marriage for us to get together and make a larger festival. So there's almost going to be, there'll be the foodie side with the beer garden, with all the food trucks and activities, some things for the kids. And then the other side of it, we're going to have makers and crafters and artists all come together of all different mediums for performances and crafts for everyone to participate in and artists to be able to sell all the things that they make.
Okay, and you'll have security? And what, what kind of alcohol will be served? And will it be a restriction on how much and so forth?
Of course, yes. It will be completely gated off. They'll take, there'll be a carding before they can go into the beer garden, and then it's just beer and wine.
Okay, and that will be by a local craft brewery or something? Is that what that'll be?
Yeah, yeah, well, as of right now, Red Door is going to be providing that for us.
Okay, okay, let's give all the questions I have at this time.
Okay, great, do we have other questions?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Ms. Hansen, last year's event, how many approximately attended that event?
So I was beyond floored. I was super excited if we were going to get 500 people there. And I think we surpassed that by, there was, throughout the day, at least 3,000 people.
Okay, and who provided security for that?
We had the security at the beer garden, but that's all we had during that time.
Okay, was there any, did you have any problems at all with?
No, actually, it was a very relaxed day. Everyone just kind of sat down, had a picnic, listened to live music. We didn't have any issues with people wanting to get in and out of the beer garden. They started to get a little hungry, though, those lines got long. But other than that, they did really well.
Good, and I know it's with, with food trucks. How many food trucks actually went out there?
I had, we had 12 last time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Casaus, you have a question?
I just want to thank Ginny for all that she does, and I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Commissioner Casaus and a second from Commissioner Garza. Will the Commissioners please vote?
I'm not able to vote, my deal's off.
Here it comes. We can look at it briefly and then switch to a roll call if we need to. Okay. By a vote of seven in favor and one against, the motion does carry.
Thank you.
Thanks for being with us, Ms. Hansen. Item number two under new business is request for approval for professional services agreement between Consensus Planning Incorporated and the City of Clovis for the preparation of a metropolitan redevelopment plan for areas one and two adjacent to the Clovis Downtown Metropolitan Redevelopment Area. Ms. Burrows?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, County Commissioners. Started to bring this to you this evening. The City of Clovis applied for a grant funding in the amount of $50,000 from the New Mexico Finance Authority in November, but last year. And we have received that funding, it's been authorized for the city. And, excuse me. And so we've started to work, we did a scope of work to have a metropolitan redevelopment area, two areas. One is to the east, and the other is to the west of the downtown core area where you already have a metropolitan redevelopment area. So I contacted, and this is part of the, one of the recommendations from the 2018 Comprehensive Plan. I contacted Consensus Planning, and they have worked with me on how to move forward with the plan, which has been approved by the State Economic Development Department. And I think Jackie Fishman, who is the principal with Consensus Planning from Albuquerque, is on the phone this evening maybe to talk about it some more, if you'd like.
Oh, great, Ms. Fishman, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
You have the floor, thank you for being with us.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Again, I'm Jackie Fishman with Consensus Planning. And I know most of the Commissioners, I think. We've worked together on the 2018 Comprehensive Plan and other projects, the Parks and Rec Master Plan. So I'm very pleased to be speaking with you tonight. Like Ms. Burrows said, this is an implementation of the 2018 Comprehensive Plan. In that, in the Comprehensive Plan, we identify these two areas that met the New Mexico Redevelopment Act definition of redevelopment areas. And basically, it's a designation of life. And it allows the city or a municipality to provide incentives for private development without running awry of the state's anti-donation clause of the Constitution. So the MRA scope, just real quickly, is comprised of five main elements. The first one being existing conditions and asset inventory. So my staff and I will come out there and do a very detailed inventory of the area, we're familiar with the area already, but we need to drill down a little bit further than that. We will also do a market analysis. The next part will be an actual master plan for the two different areas. We will also do an implementation plan with financing strategies, because this will be, this will include capital improvements. It won't only be limited to capital improvements, but that will be an aspect of it. And it, again, it is really to incentivize private development in this area. And then lastly, and this will run throughout the community participation process, which is so important in planning. That process will include, we will establish a project website for, for the MRA planning process, where anybody can, can log in and see where we're at in the process, ask us questions, provide comments, and so on. We'll also design a community survey that will be distributed both in hard copy and on Survey Monkey. We also hope to have a good steering committee to work with. And they will be, you know, helping us bounce off ideas, review drafts, trying to get people involved and coming to meetings. We'll also have some stakeholder interviews. We hope to, to work with Claire and Justin on identifying people in these areas that we need to talk to and make sure that they're a part of this process. And then we'll be doing a community workshop. That's, that's going to be, you know, obviously, a little challenging during the pandemic, but we are equipped to either do a workshop in person. We can also do it online through Zoom or, you know, one of the other video conferencing. conferencing, uh, applications. Either way, uh, Claire and I also talked about maybe having two separate workshops, uh, for each area. Maybe it's, you know, we do, uh, a few hours of one area and then we switch to the other area. Uh, all of that will be, uh, worked out with, um, Claire and Justin, uh, as we get into the project. So I'm very pleased again to, to be, uh, you know, doing the project with you all. Uh, it's, uh, quite an honor for my firm, Consensus Planning, to, uh, continue the relationship with the City of, of Clovis. And with that, I would ask for any questions you may have about the process.
Thank you for that, Ms. Fishman. Commissioners, do we have questions?
Um, Ms. Fishman, this is Commissioner Garza. I worked with you on planning and zoning before and we are very pleased with you doing this for us. Um, you, you stated here that timeline for this would be nine months. Um, given that conditions right now, is that a, a fair assessment on the timing of this to have it done?
Well, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Garza, uh, it, it would be reasonable in, in normal times. Um, what I put in our, our scope of work and in, in the, in the contract, um, was that we would, we would try to be done with the, the actual plan itself in nine months and then leave a, a month or two, um, for some, you know, for review, for scheduling meetings with you all, uh, whatever is, is needed. Um, it may take more than nine months, but, um, you know, really it's hard to predict given what the, uh, current circumstances are, um, and all the, uh, difficulties, you know, we're all having. My, my office has, has been working at home, uh, since March 16th. Uh, we're doing pretty well with it, but it is, uh, pretty challenging for us.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Garza.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Madrid. Will the commissioners please vote? By a vote of eight to zero, the motion carries. Thank you again, Ms. Fishman, for being here and Ms. Burrows for advising us on that. Item number three under new business is request for approval to send a letter to the federal delegation encouraging support for emergency funding for state and local governments. And again, earlier in the meeting, we heard from Mr. Ryan and he spoke to the letter. And, um, so now we've reached that, this, this place in the agenda. So, uh, Ms. Burrows, can you advise?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Um, Commissioner Rinder had expressed some concern about the, uh, in the third paragraph of that letter, it, uh, mentions, uh, non-essential businesses. And if you would like, we can remove the word "non-essential" and just go, you know, reopening of businesses?
I like that.
If that would help?
Yeah. I'd love that. All businesses are essential. And I think that we need to do that and that, the letter is to the point and we need to work with our delegate, delegation, whether we agree with them sometimes or not, I think is something that we gotta do and I move for approval.
Second.
So we'll change the, the wording to strike the, the phrase "non-essential."
That's great.
But we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Garza and a second from Commissioner Madrid. Will the commissioners please vote? By a vote of seven to one, the motion carries. Next, in tonight's agenda, we have reached, uh, reports of boards, officers and committees. And for the monthly investment report, Ms. Leanne Malonson, Ms. Malonson?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. It is the month of April. Summary report on page 130 of your packet. You will see that we started the month with 42.9 million, ended with 43.9 million. And a brief overview of some of your funds. General Fund One, ending cash 5.8 million. Solid Waste Fund Two, 2.4 million. Environmental Tax Fund Six, 7.8 million. Wastewater Fund Ten, 3.6 million. Economic Development Gross Receipts Tax Fund Sixty Four, 2.7 million. Water Quarter Percent Gross Receipts Fund Sixty Six, 4.7 million. And on page 131, a breakdown of our cash. We've got a little over 20 million in our local banks, 12 million in two CDs in a lo, in local banks and our state pool of $11 million. The Bank of Clovis two CDs are paying 1.62% interest. The month interest was $30,000. Our 10-month total is 361,000 and our state pool did take a drop down to 0.6711%. And that was compared to 1.19% last month. Our gross receipts tax, we did receive earlier in the week and after a report with the Finance Committee, we have changed our reporting. So we're now reporting on the fiscal year. So we are actually up 16.76% compared to last fiscal year, keeping in mind that that was partly due to a substantial increase due to a recalculation from a local business. So we are moving into budget and the new year and hopeful that with that large influx, we will survive without any significant decrease and impact to our citizens and our departments. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
We certainly hope so as well and thank you for your report, Ms. Malonson. Do we have questions?
No, excellent, excellent report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought, uh, do we have other reports? No, not that we know of. If, if I may, I, I will report very briefly, um, as to, um, my meetings with the Mayor's Council, which I'm a part of. I've shared with, with all of you and I've shared with the public, uh, that, uh, my approach, um, there has been to continually and persistently advocate for a balanced approach and, and a regional approach to reopening. And I've, I've continued to do that. And, uh, in last week's press conference, I kinda said, you know, but we haven't got that yet. So here we are and we started to look at, you know, well, what does that mean, uh, in, uh, in terms of reopening? And, um, as you know, last Saturday, May 16th began, uh, Phase, Phase One or Part A of Phase One and, um, involved the loosening of restrictions. In, uh, during the call today or during the meeting today with the Governor's Office, the, um, I think it looks very good. I think we, I, I think it looks very good that the Governor will, and, uh, that the Governor's Office will move us into that next, uh, Part B of, of Phase One with June, or starting on June 1st. I came away from that meeting feel, feeling very much like that we could expect that to happen, uh, to the point that I asked, since things are going so well, and in particular in southeast New Mexico, could we go ahead and, and, and get our community to, uh, to that, that next step? And, um, I think you know the answer that I got, but, um, they thanked me for continuing to ask. So, um, on June 1st, again, just a real quick, what we could expect if we do in fact get that, if everything tracks, um, and, and the, the state allows it, um, we will, we'll, we'll see dine-in restaurants at some restrictions, uh, open up, uh, salons, barbers, gyms, malls and, and other businesses. And again, I, I ask again for, for, for that today. And each time I've done that, I've, I've, I've stated facts about our hospital capacity, about, um, you know, the, uh, the willingness on the part of the folks in Clovis and the business owners in Clovis to, to take good care of, of the, the COVID-safe practices and all of those things. And, um, again, we are where we are. And, and I would just say, I, I know, um, there, there's pressure on every, every mayor, every, uh, city commission, every county commission around the state to, to, uh, to just open up. And, um, I, I would explain it like this. I, every mayor in, in the, in the state of New Mexico would love to see their city safely reopened right now, uh, six weeks ago, probably, right? And I certainly would, but I am completely powerless to override the, the, the state's orders. And then, you know, sometimes I'll hear from, from citizens, well, let's just do it anyway. Let's just open up anyway. Well, um, that's not who you elected. It would be irresponsible for me to say, let's open up because while I have no power to override the, the, the orders from the state, I also have no power to protect you or to protect businesses or citizens from the repercussions of defying the orders. So the only move for this mayor is to encourage compliance and, and, and good citizenship. And that, that's what I've continued to do all the while, behind the scenes, working and, and asking for an earlier reopen. Part of complying is, is the face coverings. And in, uh, last week's, um, press conference, I told you my position on that. And since then, uh, we've, we've seen, uh, a, a public service announcement that I did that the Governor's Office has shared and, and, um, and that is my position on that. And, and I, I arrived there because, um, I'm called to do nothing out of selfishness or empty conceit, but instead, in a humble mind, think of others as more important than myself. And that's what I'm doing. That's the spirit in which it's, that's the spirit in which I've decided I will cover my face in public i- in order to protect people and also in order to get us open as soon as possible. I've decided that to die on that hill would only slow the process down and complicate things for people in our community. So that's, that's my position on, on that. Uh, wanted to state that once again and just report that, um, again, very hopeful. Uh, it looks good that, that we would move to Part B of Phase One, uh, on, on June 1st and, and, and I hold out hope that, that possibly we could get there sooner. I'm certainly gonna continue to ask over the next week. There's also talk about economic recovery and economic support, uh, support packages that would be, uh, discussed in the special session this summer, which starts June 18th. So I, I just wanted to, I'm not sure that was, uh, everything that you wanted or enough of what you'd like to hear in the way of a report. Do you have any questions for me? Yes, Commissioner Rinder.
That, thank you, Mayor. One, I, I, I realize you're in a very difficult position and I, and I thank you for what you're doing and I, and I think you're doing what you believe is best for the city. I, and, and whenever I hear, let, let's open back up and, and the, there are two, uh, points to that, I think. One is getting businesses back open, which is what we absolutely need. But the other thing is, is, uh, getting some slack on the, uh, number of folks that can congregate together. I mean presently, we, we are restricted from praying together, we are restricted from mourning together, we are restricted from even drinking coffee together. And, and while I am abs, I understand where you're at, but I would love to see, complete open to me means that we can once again gather where we want to, to worship, to, to mourn and to do the things that we need to do to move on. And, and that is the second part of opening up everything. Thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you, Commissioner. I agree. Other questions?
Mayor, I'd just like to, to state that I appreciate you standing up for Eastern New Mexico and I know you are. And, uh, and I know with, uh, the other mayors involved, um, even with, uh, Mayor Cobb down in Hobbs and, and the things that he has stated about you and, and the things that you're standing for, um, I know that it's being heard. We may not have action yet, but I do appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, I think you've made a, a tremendous strides in what you've done and the way you handled it, the way you explained it with the covering your face and all this kinda stuff is, uh, is great. And I, I agree with you 100%. You know, if, if this will help to move things along, let's do it. Absolutely. Thank you for so much. And, uh, Commissioner Rinder, again, our condolences are out to you for the loss of your precious wife and we will continue to pray for you.
Yes. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, next, we will call for future agenda items. Commissioners, future agenda items?
Uh, Mayor, I just have one. I would like to, uh, like to discuss the letter we received from the county regarding the water reservation and the debt obligation.
Mr. Hawalt?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem. I, I had conversations with the county regarding that letter. Um, they're in the process of getting the, uh, letters from the, the town of Grady and also the town of Melrose. Uh, they had the first write of refusal based off an old MOU. Uh, and so as soon as we have those, um, we're, we'll bring that before you for consideration. Uh, we're also working on developing our own MOU right now with, with the county. So, uh, as soon as we can bring that to you, uh, and that we have all those pieces of the puzzle in place, we certainly will be.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Other future agenda items? Ms. Burrows?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Um, I have for the next meeting, financial advisory services, um, that's coming forward to you, um, the annual resolution for the Eastern Plains Council of Governments, uh, library board vacancies, water conservation month, we're gonna do in June, um, and then airport engineering services and an update on the Charisma funding. It's been six months since, uh, they last let us know where they were and, and that's on the next agenda too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hawalt?
And also, obviously, we're gonna have a special commission meeting next week. Um, and on that agenda will be our preliminary budget for approval as well as amendment to the CATS contract, uh, to where we're gonna receive 100% reimbursement from the federal government for our CATS program versus the current 80/20 or 50/50 depending on administration or operations.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hawalt.
One, one final, it is wonderful to be back in this environment and, and thank you for doing this and, and it's great to be here with the new commissioners and the new mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. It is great to be together in this room. Appreciate each of you. Okay, announcement of date, time and place, uh, of city board and commission meetings. Uh, it's important to note that Monday is Memorial Day. I wish everyone a, a happy Memorial Day. Um, the city hall will be closed on, on Monday, May 25th. We do have the special meeting that Mr. Hawalt just mentioned, Tuesday, May 26th at 2:00 PM. And the next commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 4th, uh, here in the North Annex. And, uh, again, as, uh, as we conclude this evening, please, uh, have a, have a happy Memorial Day weekend and, and thank you, Commissioner Elliott, for bringing it up. But I did want to mention that one of our own is, um, suffering loss right now. Commissioner Rinder, Rinder, we are, uh, uh, our thoughts and prayers are with you on the passing of your wife.
Thanks.
And we are adjourned.